Hi, I'm Robin Schultz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Good evening and welcome to the August 25th meeting of the Hoover City Council. I would like to call being to order and ask the clerk please hold over.
Council President Lita.
Here.
Councilwoman Tamsi.
Here.
Councilmember Swinney.
Here.
Councilmember Driver.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Middlebrook.
Here.
Here.
For Mr. President, if everyone would please stand before the opening of the session. Remain standing until the next one.
Good evening, ladies. Do you have any final just thank you for the night. We thank you for just us having you in this meeting. I thank you for as kind of the head as the city. I thank you for watching over us and I thank you for just blessing our city abundantly. And I thank you for the leaders wisdom tonight as they go in all different matters. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe you have some special recognition and guests who would like to recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize Betsy Vettner, Violet Cheffage, and Debbie King if they would come out this evening. Good evening, ladies. This is Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month. And we have a proclamation that we would love to read publicly. And so, Mr. City Attorney, you would?
Whereas gynecologic cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, more than 125,000 women will be diagnosed and more than 33,000 women will die from these diseases this year, and the absence they leave in their hearts will be deeply felt forever. Whereas the Laura Kranial Brown Foundation and their State of Field Initiative brings awareness of all GYN cancers to people throughout the state of Alabama, and whereas the good health and well-being of women in our state and the city of Hoover are enhanced by increased awareness of GYN cancers and their symptoms and treatments. And whereas it is also crucial that all women in our state and the city of Hoover take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with GYN cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. And whereas we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those currently battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, and research so that the women of our state might be spared from them in the future, encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers. Now therefore, we Frank B. Brokato, Mayor, and John B. Lita, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover and the Hoover City Council, do hereby declare September 2025 as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month in Hoover, Alabama, and encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness to GYN cancers and to commend this observance to all our citizens.
Good evening, and thank you for making this proclamation and awareness. And thank you for the awareness that it will bring to ovarian cancer and GYN cancers. I have battled ovarian cancer three times in the last nine years, but by the grace of God, I'm still here. Most women diagnosed are around my age, but unfortunately, it's becoming more common in teenagers and younger women. The earlier it's caught, the better and easier to treat, but that's difficult without a diagnostic test. Out of the GYN cancer's only cervical cancer has a routine screening test. In the near future, I believe raising awareness along with efforts from the Laura Kranial Brown Foundation and like-minded organizations will bring about a reliable diagnostic test for ovarian and other GYN cancers, new treatment options, and hopefully a cure. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing quickly. These ladies are both residents of Hoover, and I'm so thrilled to know them. They are warriors and survivors, and I just think the world of them. Like Violet said, there is only one early detection test for one of the five GYN cancers, and that cervical cancer. I have these little cards, and I'm going to leave them on the table outside. They are symptom trackers. So ladies, if you would pick one up for yourself, and then if you'd like to pick one up for a lady that you love, that would be great. It's also got some information about the foundation on it. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, and we would like to now, for part of our program, our meeting, where we recognize our employees who have hit a milestone. And tonight, we have Rita Harper here. Rita, come down if you would. Rita is, she's a part of our engineering program. She's the engineering program manager. And Rita started here August 18th of 2005 as a senior administrative assistant in the Building Inspections Department, and she became known as the guru of permitting for her exceptional knowledge and service to contractors and residents. And if you had any questions about permitting, you always went to Rita, and it is such a specialty, and she gets folks able, she's able to work through the red tape so much, does a great job. 2019, she transferred to the engineering department as an administrative service specialist, and later was promoted to the program manager. In this role, Rita manages the department's operating budget and a multimillion-dollar capital projects budget. She coordinates all ALDOT project agreements, oversees funding and reimbursement and invoices, and manages right-of-way acquisitions for both ALDOT and city projects. Big deal, big deal. Among her many accomplishments, other than keeping the engineering department in check, she successfully led the right-of-way acquisition for the Big Valley Del Road widening project, which is a significant milestone for the city. We appreciate that. And she also ensures the smooth and daily operations of the engineering department by handling requisitions, invoices, all the calls, and correspondence as well. She's known for her dedication, just a strong work ethic. She's the first person to ride at work and the last one to leave, and that's just kind of her motto and her work ethic. That's who she is. But she's very professional, someone so dependable that we depend on her tremendously, and we're so grateful that she has put in 20 years here, and hopefully she'll consider 20 more. Congratulations to her.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ms. Cornet with a revenue trend report.
I have a couple more notes. Let's start with the, I'm not sending it to all of the board. Not planning to talk in face to my side. I joined the board pages and brought you my two. Okay, so while y'all are getting your copies, if you'll move on to the first sheet here. So this is presenting the revenues for the city for the first nine months of the fiscal year. You can see that we have our revenues broken down by tax revenues and then other revenues. And one of the points that I'd like to make is nine months, nine months of the year means we're 75% of the way through the year. The $118 million that we have in tax revenues represents 83% of the budget that we have for tax revenues. So we're a little bit ahead of pace there. And if we go all the way down to the bottom line, the grand total of revenues of 146, 146 million, that represents 85% of the budget in total revenues that we had planned for. So as we're looking at this report, remember we have our four major governmental funds with the general fund, and the budget for the general fund being on the first far-left columns. The general fund, remember, is what really pays for the primary operations of the city and ends up funding many of the other funds that we have in the city as well. So when we look across, and the next two columns are related to special revenues, you see that we have some revenues that have come in. And when we look down the column and find the $2.8 million in charges for services, just in case you wondered what that was, that is the funding that comes in related to stormwater and drug testing. We also see $73 million related to grant contributions, and then the $166 million in the actual column under special revenues relates to our opioid supplements that the city has received. Under capital projects columns, what we see is some intergovernmental revenue. The $133,000 represents reimbursements that we've received from the Alabama Department of Transportation. And then the $101,000 that you see down at the bottom also includes some reimbursements. There was a partnership that we did with the schools where we shared the cost of replacing bleachers at the Met, and so that was, that reimbursement was included there. Under the general obligation warrant bond fund, the last two columns on the sheet, you notice you just have one line item for income, and this relates to interest from our invested funds that have not yet been spent of those bond proceeds. So if you look at the next slide, there's a chart that represents, that doesn't look very good. See if you can click that.
Sorry. It definitely looked the same as the first one. Okay, that'll be its work in my own.
Okay, there we go.
I think you just took a minute.
Now we have our bubbles refreshed. Thank you. Okay, so this pie reflects what, where our tax revenues came from. It's no surprise probably to most of us that 74% of our tax revenue consists of sales and use taxes. For the purposes of this graph, I have included SSUT in this group, simplified seller's use tax. The next highest category of tax revenue is property tax, followed by gross receipts, and then some other smaller categories. On the next slide is a pie chart that shows a breakdown of all the revenues for the city. So you can see that when we look at total revenues for the city, tax revenues as a group make up 81% of all of our taxes. It's not just sales tax, but all of our taxes make up 81% of the revenues to date that the city has brought in, with 8% coming from licenses and permitting, and then 3% coming from interest, and then we have some other smaller categories of revenues as well. On the next page, we have our statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for each of these funds. So again, we're working with that $146 million of total revenues there at the top in the general fund, but here you can see the breakdown by kind of expenditure that we had. Just hitting on a few things as we look at, as you know, debt service, debt service is a big chunk. We have one more payment, I think we have a couple of payments that have to be made on our bond issues at the beginning of September, and so all of those haven't come in yet. Our total debt service is a little over $17 million for the year, for this year, based on schedule. One of the things that I would like to point out related to the expenditures for the general fund and the access for the general fund is that right now we're showing an excess of $26 million. I don't want us to get too excited about that because we have three more months of expenditures that are going to be coming in, and our expenditures tend to come in in a normal kind of smooth pattern where our revenues, we've collected our revenue, we kind of collect our revenues on the front end a little bit more. So I do expect that access to come down a little bit as we close out the year, but I think that certainly looks good for the year. On the next slide, if you want to just look at the breakdown of types of expenditures, I think this is a helpful slide to kind of see where are the dollars going, where the public dollars going in the general fund. 39% of the expenditures to date have been paid out related to public safety, and that includes fire, police, and 911 activities. You can see our general expenditures, which include city administration, include the finance department, and other general things, make up 17% of our expenditures. Parks and Rec makes up 12%. Our debt service is 14% of our expenses paid, and the other large category is 9% for highway and road improvements. I thought that was a little bit helpful to kind of see the breakdown of where the money is going, just in a visual, visual way. Do you have any questions about the nine-month report?
Just one, Mr. President. Ms. Cornet, moving forward under the, on the first page, tax revenue, sales and use tax. We included another line there for grocery tax. Can we start?
I can tell you, I can tell you what the grocery tax is. I have that in my, I have it in my folder. I think the grocery tax year-to-date is around $13 million. So I came prepared. Grocery tax gets included in the sales tax, and so it makes it a little bit difficult to like to pull it out on that report. It doesn't have its own code, so to speak. Got too many pieces of paper here. Okay. So in my amount of over-preparation, I do not have this stupid sheet that I meant to bring with me, but I can send you that right now so that you can have it.
The number that you're going to send me, do we feel confident now that all of the grocery stores are now in compliance with?
Yes. For a while, we were having to estimate the grocery tax because places like, well, I won't share who it was, but it's very difficult for some of the grocers to split between grocery and non-grocery out for sales tax, but we think that we've gotten them to where they can report those two things separately so we can track them, because it is important to see what portion of your sales tax is made up of the grocery tax. But based on my memory, we were tracking at $13 million of grocery, of sales tax related to grocery.
Thank you.
So that's pretty significant. Any other questions? Okay. Just quickly, on the next report, wanted to provide an update. So we have, and I do want to say, like, when I'm presenting revenues and expenditures, I'm wanting to do that because we have buttoned up all of the things that we're supposed to button up in an accounting sense, like we've done our reconciliations, and so we can feel good about the numbers. So we are working on our reconciliations for the month of July, but we have completed all of our bank reconciliations through June, which is what was covered by the financial statements that you just saw. I did think you might like to see how we did during the month of July in terms of just revenues and our major revenue trends, and so I wanted to go ahead and report on that tonight. So we would have one more month of information related to that, and I brought really large sheets again for you guys for this major revenues report. You can see those a little bit easier because on this next page, the font is going to be very small. Okay. So this is our major revenue report that outlines the different sources of revenues that come into the city. So through month 10, I think the 83%, if I did my percentages right, 83% of the year has passed. And so as we're looking at the major revenues report and looking at the percentage of budget that we've reached for each of these categories, we have just one category that is just shy of 83%, 82.58%. So if we round up, if you follow normal rounding conventions, they're all 83% or above, but that was the lodging tax that is just almost right on, right on the mark. So it's no surprise that our sales and use tax is large. I'm going to show you some graphs in a few minutes, but generally what we're seeing in terms of trends with our sales and use tax and SSUT is that sales and use is growing in kind of a small way, but SSUT is growing in a larger way, and that's something that we should expect. It's kind of something that's happening across the state because more people are purchasing things online, which means the tax collections are going to come in through SSUT and not through our traditional channels. That's a challenge to cities because we're not collecting the same percentage that we normally collect. So for the city of Hoover, we have 3.5% tax that comes to the city if those sales are made in a brick-and-mortar store. But if it is a sale made online and it comes in through SSUT, the pro-rata share that gets divvied out is 2.4% to the cities. Okay? And so the challenges with SSUT are that rate is lower, so that's 1.1% lower than what we're used to getting. But then there's also a challenge with making sure that you're getting your fair share of those taxes that are collected online. Okay, so as we look at the next slide, I want to just show you a few trends, and I think all of these were pretty positive. I want to show you kind of month to month so that you can see. So we're comparing June of this year to June of last year was up by 157,000 or 1.65%. For the month of July, it was up 364,000, so about 4.2%. And we'll look at some percentages for year-to-date in just a minute. But just looking at these monthly comparisons, we're starting to see some positive trends, which is good. For SSUT on the next slide, SSUT for the month of June was up around $96,000, which was a 15.7% increase over last June. In July, up 82,000, which was almost 13% increase. On the next slide, we have our real property trends, and as we know, these are taxes that are collected earlier in the year, and so we see a wide degree of variability in the months of June over four years presented here. This category right now is at 97% of budget, so we've collected 97% of the real property taxes that were budgeted for this year. On the next slide for license and permits, license and permits, again, kind of wacky June to July. So we had a big increase in July, this July over last July, and then a decrease from this June to last June, and these really kind of offset each other. So it just looked like some of the license and permit collections kind of shifted to the next month. I would call that a zero-sum game in terms of increase. On the next slide, the grocery receipts and franchise taxes. Again, we collect most of these dollars in January, February, and a little bit in March. Up to this point, we've collected 103% of what was budgeted. So we are, I guess, in the gravy, as they say, for this year. Hope we can collect some more of those for this year. The next slide begins our year-to-date trends. So this is really looking at for the first 10 months of the fiscal year, how are we doing relative to the three prior years for that same period? So for sales and use, in the first 10 months, we are up $3.2 million in '25 over '24 for the same period, which is a 3.67% increase, and I hope that holds. That's definitely stronger than what we were seeing earlier in the year. On the next slide, SSUT, you'll see also is in an increasing kind of mode. For the same period in 2025, we increased our SSUT collections by 827,000, which was a 13% increase overall. On the next slide, when we look at the real property taxes, and we do expect property taxes to go up because the property values go up over time. So for the first 10 months, an increase of $485,000 over last year, an increase of License and permits also saw a small increase right at 1%, $120,000. And then grocery receipts and franchise taxes, this is my last one, went up by 334,000, 3.87%. That's the next slide. Just one more. Pink, there we go. 334,000, increase of 3.87%. I found my grocery sales tax information. Okay, 13,282,303,8 collected to date. Our monthly amounts for grocery tax that we collect range from about $1,200,000 to $1,600,000. June was a high month for some reason, lots of people eating, I guess. But right at a little over $13 million in grocery taxes. Any questions about that? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cornet. Remember to the regular agenda, beginning with item number one, table of deals.
Mr. President, I move to approve. Second.
Have a motion, second for approval, with comments of the press from the bottom. Comments of the press from the audience? Seeing now, I'll let the paper say aye.
Aye.
If there's a motion, aye. I say, hand motion carries, item number three, resolution number 8551-254.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes without reading. Second.
Have a motion, second for approval, any comments from the audience? Seeing now, call the paper, say aye.
Aye.
If there's a motion, aye. I say, hand motion carries, item number three, resolution number 8551-254.
This resolution provides a 040 retail beer on or off premises alcohol license and 060 retail table wine on or off premises alcohol license for Taziki's Mediterranean Cafe doing business as pass Hoover LLC, looking at 58D Nelsie Road, building D1, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move to approve, resolution number 8551-254.
Second.
Have a motion, second for approval. Ms. Dixon, anything to report on the application?
There are no issues with this request.
Very good. Any questions from the bottom? Comments from the audience? Seeing now, I'll let the paper say aye.
Aye.
If there's a motion, aye. I say, no. I say, hand motion carries, item number four, is resolution number 8552-254.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokato to accept the bid, bid number 25-016, from Screenworks NEP for the truck-mounted LED video screen rental for the cost of $25,500 and authorizes the mayor to execute agreement. Boarding the second. Partying with the same.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number eight-five-five-two-dash-two-five. Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Pepper.
Yeah, thank you. This is the video board that we used during the SEC baseball tournament, so in left field is the temporary board. We put this project out to bid. We did receive a one bid back from Screenworks NEP. It's the company we've been using for the past four years. It is a one-year agreement, with the option to extend that agreement for one more year should both parties choose to do so. And we wanted to note, too, that this money would be coming out of the 2026 operating budget.
Any questions for Ms. Pepper?
Mr. President, how does the price compare to last year?
It is a slight increase from last year. We've used this company for, like I said, for four years. The first year that we used them, it was twenty-two thousand dollars. We were splitting that cost with another management, another company at the time. So, up to twenty-five-five now. So, it is a slight increase, but we still feel like it's a good price for what we get. And it also includes travel money and hotel money to stay for two technicians to be on-site for the whole week as well.
And does the opportunity to extend the contract for a year keep it at the same price, or would it be a price increase?
It would be the same price.
Any comments, questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll let the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I say, hand motion carries. Item five, this is resolution number eight-five-five-four-dash-two-five, this is for.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Bocato to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Jefferson County Emergency Management Agency and all related documents for the Shelter Jeffco Safer Places program.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number eight-five-four-four. Eight-five-five-four, this is for.
Second. Motion and a second. Ms. Jen, are you here to speak about this item?
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the transportation plan, the annual transportation plan.
Mr. President, I believe what Charlie read and what the resolution meant for two different things.
It's a correct number. I believe the title is wrong. But yes, I'm here to talk about the annual transportation.
So, this, is this eight-five-five-four?
Yes.
Is that an optional transportation plan? This would be twenty-point-six. Proof it, Ms. Jen.
Okay. This is just an annual thing that we do at the city for the fiscal year '26, House Bill Two funds. With this money, we're going to resurface the portions of Shays' Cuscar Road in the city of Hoover, east and west of the inner shade.
Good. Any comments or questions from the body on this item? Any comments from the public regarding the resolution? Seeing none, I'll let the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I say, hand motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Item six, resolution number eight-five-five-five-dash-two-five, this is for.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Bocato to execute a joint or agreement with WeCare TLC LLC and the documents necessary for such agreement.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number eight-five-five-five-dash-two-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Walker, would you like to come talk to us about this resolution, please?
Sure. So, as many of you are aware, One Medical provided medical clinical services to City of Hoover employees. Well, they were acquired recently by Amazon, and abruptly, Amazon decided to discontinue that contract. Fortunately, WeCare has decided to honor that contract, and doing so will allow no interruption in services and benefits to its employees.
Any comments or questions, Ms. Walker? Any comments from the public on the resolution? We have a motion, second for approval. All in the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I say, hand motion carries. Item seven, resolution number eight-five-five-six-dash-two-five.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Bocato to execute an agreement with Hoover Mall Holding LLC for the 9/11 stair climb at the River Chase Galleria.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number eight-five-five-six-dash-two-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Peoples is here to talk to us about this.
Good evening. On Saturday, September 6th, at nine o'clock, the city of Hoover, specifically the Hoover Fire Department, Hoover Police Department hold their annual 9/11 remembrance ceremony and stair climb. So, this is a facility use agreement with Galleria to do those that morning.
Good. Always a great annual event. Any comments or questions from the body? Any comments from the public? Good. Motion and second is on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I say, hand motion carries. Item number eight, resolution number eight-five-five-seven-dash-two-five, this is for.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Bocato to accept a bid, bid number twenty-five-dash-zero-one-two, from MJ Harris Construction Services LLC for the NCFI renovation and expansion project in the amount of twenty-one million, three-hundred-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, and authorizes Mayor Bocato to execute an agreement with Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution number eight-five-five-seven-dash-two-five. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Ms. Corning.
Council, thank you. This is an exciting topic with our NCFI, National Computer Forensic Institute project. We've got our team, which I'll introduce in just a second, but they came to Hoover in 2007, roughly, in the Public Safety Center, not long after the Public Safety Center was bought, and began to grow from there. There've been a variety of expansions on the second floor there that we've had, including additional classrooms and some other facilities that we've built along the way. We've had a great partner with Shelby County along the way with these expansions as well. And so, as you all are aware, we applied for and through Mayor Bocato's office and you as the city council successfully achieved a Department of Homeland Security grant in the amount of twenty-one-point-eight-five million dollars. And so, that is part of the Department of Homeland Security, and so it's going to allow some expansion, which I'll let them tell you about. So, we have with us tonight Special Agent HR Donald Witham, Bill Lindsey from NCFI. And so, then we have Hannah Burns, representing Turner Batson, the architect. We have Representative Lemoine, Project Management Services, Bill Heath. And then, I'm going to turn it over in just a second and let Mimi White give you the details of the grant. The item tonight is to award the grant, and if you do that, when we finish, I'm going to recognize the folks on the last row, because I can't recognize them until you take action. Okay? Come on, tell us a question.
Good evening. I just want to take a few moments just to tell you a little bit about the institute, for those that haven't come over there. Since its inception and since we started training students, judges, prosecutors there since 2008, we've brought through approximately thirty thousand students. This past year, we had over four thousand students attended person. To give you an idea of the economic impact on the city, there was over twenty-seven thousand room nights that we provided the funding for. This year, we're already over twenty-eight thousand. Our fiscal year is running conjunction with yours, so we're looking to continue to increase that through the month of September, because we backload many classes in September, making sure that we have the funding for it. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you some of the success stories. I'll touch upon one recent canine class that came through, which started providing canines to officers from around the country, and they go out, and they go out on searches for child exploitation. They go out on any type of electronic search, because they're trained to actually detect the chemicals that are in memory devices. One such case recently, there was a stalking victim in the state of California, and the canine was asked to come and search the person's car, because the person was continually stalked, and they always knew where the person was going to be. When the dog sat on the bumper, the officer politely told him, "You need to take the bumper off." They found the tracking device that was being used to track that stalking victim. I think it's important, because it's similar to our child exploitations, where you can't even compute what it's like to keep a victim alive that may not have been alive. So, I give you that just to say that the impact is, it's something we can't put enough on, when you're talking about the lives of children and the lives of people that are being stalked. The goal of this expansion is to increase that number from approximately four thousand to eight thousand. So, in addition to the room nights I spoke about, we give people per deal, we give them over two-point-five million dollars, we're giving them, to spend on meals in the area, which I'm sure helps towards those taxes that we're just speaking about. And if we double those numbers, I anticipate those numbers to be approximately doubled about four or five years from now, if this expansion's approved. I'll be happy to stay for questions.
Thank you very much. We're going to invite Hannah Burns from Turner Batson to show you some renderings of what we'll be doing and building.
Good evening, everyone. As Ken and Don stated, the partnership with NCFI and Hoover is a long-standing partnership, and Turner Batson has worked for over ten years with these two to just develop the facilities that are here in the city of Hoover. So, we can go to the next slide. So, this is the Hoover Public Safety Building as it currently stands. As you can see, a label, you can see Valley Del Road on the south, Highway 31 on the side. And then, if you look towards the top of the screen, you can see the existing Sallyport, the jail entrance, and the courts parking. If you'll go to the next slide. So, this is the proposed NCFI addition. So, as we stated, we've worked with NCFI and Hoover for several years on this expansion, and this expansion provides the more space for an auditorium and classrooms, but it's outside of the current Hoover Public Safety Building. So, your courts remain the same, the jail can still function, but this is happening in the parking lot directly outside of the courts. If you'll go to the next slide. So, this is an exterior rendering of that addition. You can see to the left of the screen, that's the existing Hoover Public Safety Building. We celebrated NCFI with their logo, as well as trying to tie back into the existing architecture that's already present on the site. Next slide, yes. So, again, when you enter the site, you know there's some great change. So, this is just coming in off of Valley Del Road. You can see over that hill, the facilities with that Hoover Public Safety Building in the background. And then, if you look behind that tree, that's where they currently drop off their students. But in this image, you can see that there's actually a new bus drive that will provide their students and visitors to come in through their own entrance. Next slide. So, this is as you enter into that space. The class behind the seating is all new office space to give NCFI space for, I'm sure, the new employees will be needed to train up these students. There's an auditorium, a grand stair, and then if you walk up the grand stair, past all those offices, that takes you into the existing second story of the Hoover Public Safety Building, where we are proposing renovations to that space for some training rooms. So, this is the auditorium. It seats two-hundred-and-fifty students. This allows them to teach students in one room, where they currently have to go into multiple rooms and do the same thing. I think it's an onboarding space for them, and it's an asset for their current curriculum. So, like I said, once you enter into that main lobby space, when you go up that stair, you enter into existing Hoover Public Safety Building. So, this is entering into the space. It's already on-site with renovations that provide training rooms on the left, and then there's support spaces like vending, dining, the auditorium, and then also some smaller training rooms for group training. And then, this is just an example of the training room. All the students will have a training room to report to, and this is one of them. And then, this is just an estimated project schedule. If we do start in August, it's just a proposed schedule.
All right, thank you. So, if you are around Hoover at lunchtime, you will see the buses that drop off NCFI students. They're certainly in our restaurants, eating. You'll see them with the NCFI tags on to hold their badges and everything, so we appreciate everything that they do. We're pleased to be a part of this project. The scope of the project includes three thirty-five-person classrooms, a two-hundred-and-fifty-seat instructional auditorium that you saw, twenty administrative office spaces, common spaces and facilities to include some dining spaces and places to gather, and then renovations to the existing spaces as needed. I'm going to go a little bit through the funding information. What we're asking council to vote on tonight is to award the bid for the construction of this project. The Department of Homeland Security issued a grant for twenty-one million, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the construction of this facility. Shelby County is paying an additional one-point-one million directly for the architect and design fees. After allocating five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars to construction project management and inspection fees, the city found that we have available funding from the grant of twenty-one million, three-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. The city received two qualified kids. Both of those bids were above the amount of the available funding. There is a provision under the Alabama bid law that allows us, in that case, to declare the lowest bidder and enter into negotiations. We believe that time is of the essence, and that the negotiated changes in this case are in the public interest, and the changes do not materially alter the scope and nature of the project. So, therefore, the city issued a notice of intent to negotiate to the architects. After accepting alternate warning, which removed elevator modifications, MJ Harris was deemed the lowest responsible and responsive bidder at twenty-one thousand, or twenty-one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. The project team sat down with NCFI and the rest of our team to value-engineer some of these items, so that we could get the cost down to the available funding. That list of items is included in your packet. So, therefore, tonight's action is to award the bid to MJ Harris as the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the amount of twenty-one million, three-hundred-and-nine-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Lemoine will be acting as the construction project manager. That's part of that initial cost outside of the cost of the bid, and that is to act on the city's behalf as our advocate, kind of be the boots on the ground during the construction phase, and to help keep us on schedule and within budget. And we are happy to, depending on the questions the council has at this time.
Any questions for Ms. White of the team?
Thank you so much for the presentation, first of all. Just one question. Does it take care of also the furnishings as well, too?
The furnishings are actually provided by NCFI under their dollars, so it does not include all of the fixtures.
Any comments from the public regarding the resolution for the council? Very good. We have a motion, second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. I say, hand motion carries.
Thank you for the approval. At this time, I'd like to recognize, on the back row, if you'll raise your hands, the team from MJ Harris, Scott Porter-Mall, Rob Harris, David Abbott, and Becky Furman. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We now have three first readings. Out of the nine, ten, eleven, we'll not be voting on by the bodies of the nation, but we'll be raised the second time in our next meeting, with the end of item number nine, resolution number eighteen, four, eight, six, two, five.
This resolution authorizes abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at twenty-eight seventy-four West Fury Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2025. Yes, as of right now, we still have a nuisance occurring at this site. We will be back with an update at the second reading.
Very good. Item ten, resolution number eight-five-four-nine-dash-two-five, this is for.
This resolution authorizes abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at twenty-eight seventy-four West Fury Drive, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2025. As of right now, there is a nuisance on the site. We will be back with an update at the second reading.
Item eleven, resolution number eight-five-five-zero-dash-two-five.
This resolution authorizes abatement of weed or other vegetation nuisance at thirty-five-oh-one Laurelview Lane, Hoover, Alabama. Public hearing will be held on September 8th, 2025. A bit of good news on this one. This connection will be reviewed from the agenda for the second reading. Our head enforcement officer went by the site today and found it cut to their satisfaction.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mark. We will now be removing that from the agenda for the next time. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. I begin with council comments, and wish Ms. Emma Terry, who is the reigning Miss Alabama and former Miss Hoover, she will be making her way to Orlando. I begin with Council comments, and wish Miss Emma Terry, who is the reigning Miss Alabama and former Miss Hoover, she will be making her way to Orlando next week for the Miss America competition. That will be held September second through the seventh in Orlando with former Miss Hoover, current Miss America, Abby Stocker crowning her the new Miss America. Please serve rooting for Miss Alabama, make it to the relevant. I know we all be tuned in watching that, and ready for her. Any other comments from the body?
Yes, Mr. President. I want to thank Wendy for, an election is a big undertaking. And you and all the volunteers who've trained, they make that election happen. Been through a couple of myself, and I mean, I think that goes unnoticed, if people realize how much work goes into that. You mentioned you had to step outside your work twenty-four seven on this thing, and this tomorrow, and after tomorrow night, I have results, maybe you can take some time off after that. I'd also like to wish everybody running your luck all the way back. This is a rewarding job. It's a tough job. A lot of times, you have to balance work, like I have the last few months since April, since it's been promoted, and have the balance whether to be here, whether to be at work, and then also with kids' activities, you know, they don't, they don't... School doesn't call and plan around city meetings for those things, so sometimes you have to choose. I do, I'm amazed at the amount of resources being put forward this election. I was talking to Casey earlier, and I think my first election, I spent two thousand dollars on an election, had a runoff, and that was about it. And now that same seat's like between twenty and eighty, depending on who wins that seat, that's sometimes going to be spent on it. That's escalated quite a bit, maybe some of that's inflation, I'm not sure. But I do wish you all luck. It's rewarding. I'm here for any of you, when you get elected, to advise, to help you in any way. I'm sure everybody else up here is, and we'll find out tomorrow night who's going to be sitting these seats in November.
Any other comments? Oh, Sylvia.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Chris Silva from twenty-one fifty-two Chapel Road. I think I met most of you last meeting when I was at... For those who weren't, hopefully you got my letter. So what do you think about our ongoing zoning issue? So just want to provide a very quick update. We did indeed have a meeting last week with Mayor Roca and most of the city staff, and Mr. McLean representing the city council. So I just wanted to say thank you all for that. I think it was productive. It's refreshing to see the responsiveness of our elected officials to a concerned citizen with an issue like this. A lot of people have said it's only because it is an election coming up here in the near future, so... Whether that's true or not, all joking aside, I think this zoning issue's been going on since well before the last election. And unfortunately, our zoning issue problems will be going on long after tomorrow's election. So regardless of elections, I just want to say we look forward to continuing to engage with the city, with the Council, the administration, and hopefully bring this problem to a close. Thank you all again for your service to the city. Thank you for your time.
Matthew Winter, fifty-four eighty-one Scout Creek Drive. I graduated from Irwin High School on the north side of town longer ago than I would like to admit. I've had family and friends in Hoover for as long as I can remember. I even managed to make it to a Hoover prom back in the nineties. I moved to Arizona for college, found my wife, started a family, and founded and sold a decade-old technology company. After my twenty years in Arizona, we chose to relocate to Hoover, a city I'd always admired. We purchased property in two thousand and seven with the intention of building our dream home in Hoover because of the schools, low crime, and quality of life. Life happens. It took more time than we expected to get moved to Hoover, but after a few years, we were here. The property purchased is bisected by Hurricane Branch, a creek, which is one of the main reasons I fell in love with it. My wife liked the proximity to a shoe store. In two thousand and fourteen, we planned on building a home. There was a significant rain event, and I noticed what I had always considered to be a ditch next to the driveway had been substantially eroded. It was about three feet wide and a foot deep, and had eroded to becoming more than six feet wide and significantly deeper than I am tall. At this point, we had owned the property for seven years, and nothing similar had happened. I had a representative from a local engineering company out to the property for surveying related activities. He asked what was going on next to the driveway. I explained I had no idea, but this had recently happened. He suggests I figure out what's going on, and I needed a hydrologist. I asked, what's a hydrologist? Later, I investigated by following the water path next to the driveway upstream, which I later learned was an ephemeral stream. I discovered a land clearing operation with enormous concrete pipe so large I could walk into it, set up to discharge into the small ephemeral stream next to the driveway. This began a long journey for my family that I never expected we would... I never expected we were experienced when we decided to relocate to Hoover. I went to Hoover, talked to the city engineer, met with a developer, hired experts, hired lawyers. Eventually, we fired a lawsuit against United States Steel, the developer of the preserve. During this time, I learned a lot about engineering, construction, and stormwater. I even managed to get a job at the National Water Center on campus in Tuscaloosa, supporting the development of water modeling software for NOAA to predict flooding. I worked with many hydrologists and scientists and learned a lot about hydrology along the way. In early October of two thousand and twenty-one, there was a significant rain event. During further development of the preserve, recently installed concrete culverts washed out, backed up an enormous amount of water, washed out. This sent a torrent of water carrying rocks, sediment, trees, and other debris into Hurricane Branch, where it was carried downstream. What didn't settle on my property settled in other places downstream, damaging homes along Alseer and water bodies all the way to Paradise Lake. Later, Hoover held a meeting for residents to discuss the situation resulting from the storm. I met lots of Hoover residents all over the city who had stormwater issues, and I realized my problem was not unique. Hoover is not serving its citizens in terms of stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Winter.
I began attending city council meetings and actually paying attention to local politics.
Mr. Winter, your time is up.
I've learned a lot about what is happening in Hoover politics, and to echo some of the city council members, we can do better.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hoover is better than this. Citizens deserve to be heard and respected. I think it's understood that not everyone is going to get everything they want. Advocating for citizens is the job of elected officials. Hoover exists because of and to serve its citizens. In September of two thousand and twenty-four, a federal jury found in favor of us against you.
What'd you say? I'm sorry.